All right. All right, good evening, everybody. We're going to get started here momentarily. If you can ensure your cell phones are off or on silent. Council members, ensure your microphones are turned on, please.
Dang it. I think it's this one.
A little longer of the two.
Oh, wait, their sizes?
Yeah, they're a little longer than the other.
All right, so today's Monday, May 5th, 2025. This is Committee of the Whole Meeting for Barberton City Council. Before we begin our Committee of the Whole Meeting, we do have individual committee meetings this evening, and we're going to just change it up real quick. And instead of streets, we're going to start with the Planning, Annexation and Codes with Mr. Heidick.
Thank you, Mr. President. Planning, Annexation and Codes, Monday, May 5th, 2025, 6:00 P.M. in council chambers. Committee is present, which consists of Councilors Thompson, Harris, President Greer, myself as chair, and all others are noted. Do have one request tonight. Letter from Stacy Carr, the Planning Director, requesting legislation to approve the city of Barberton to sell parcels 01.05664 and 01.5666 for economic development purposes. Please see request, this referred from Parks. And we have a guest here that would like to share his vision for it, by all means.
Hi, I'm Jeremy Clemmenson. I will, I am the owner of Clem's Restaurant, which will hopefully will be coming down where the old Will's and Cherry's was at 477 West Tusk. And I'm coming here to, I think I've talked to all the council members, but so like to explain, I'm buying the building. There is three key factors. One was getting a $95,000 grant, which I've already secured. And I'm actually trying to apply for some other grants, but the key factor is getting the 95 grand, which I appreciate everyone who had a part with that. And the other one is getting a loan, which I'm securing right now, and the other is getting this property, which will provide patio for the thing, which I think is very pertinent downtown. There's not a ton of patios, and I would appreciate if you guys approve that. A little bit about my vision, though, it's going to be called Clem's Viral Bites. It's going to be a restaurant with a bar, not a bar with a restaurant, because I'm looking more to serve food than drinks. I'm going to have a core menu, but I'm going to also have like, I guess, a kind of a hidden menu, where it's going to be on TikTok reels, where I'll come in, or someone, may not be me, but someone, my chef, will come in and will say, hey, this is so-and-so from Clem's Viral Bites, today I'm going to make this. And they're going to show how to make it. They say, like I said, we're going to show you how to make it, you can make it at home, or this week we're going to serve it. So we're going to try to serve it, use social media to get people in here. I'm also going to use people, like Monty's going to come and make something. Right, Monty? But I'm going to get people from the community, like I talked to Brian Canali, he's going to come, he's going to come in and use like some of his products from White House, or not White House, now it's Hopkins Gardens, because he only owns one. But he's going to come in, and he's going to say, hey, this is Brian Canali from Hopkins Gardens, today I'm at Clem's Restaurant, I'm making such and such, and I'll serve a product for him. My goal is to kind of use the community, work together, and feed off each other. I'm even going to, like, I talked to Aunt Hannah today, or Debbie, her mom, they're going to come in and they're going to make Aunt Hannah's lasagna. And I'm going to be like, hey, they're going to give the commercial for their antique place, you know, which for me, if you have one place to go, you may not go, but if you have two places, if you're like, I'm going to go eat here, and I'm going to go to the antique mall, my goal is to try to get more people into Barberton, to get people down to my restaurant, because if you're going to go somewhere else, you know, even I talked to David, I'd like him to come on, you know, for Green Diamond, and have him make something, even though we're, you know, but the more we can promote each other, the better it's going to work. So if anyone has any questions for me, great, if not, I'm going to sit down. I don't care. Any questions?
No questions.
Hey, I appreciate you letting me speak.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any questions about the legislation request? Seeing none, do I have a motion to call for it?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Council Harris is a little late on that, but it still passed.
Yes.
That's all the requests. We do have one pending. It's the ordinance to accept the donation of property for the Newton Park area there. I'm sure everybody remembers that. I will entertain the motion to add a section that no construct shall be permitted other than land improvements and maintenance until the parcels are sold or dedicated as park plan by ordinance. In the event council authorizes the sale and the parcels transfer or dedication to create park plan, this section shall become null and void. Do I have a motion for that amendment?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
And miscellaneous discussion, the director is here.
I am here.
So let's see. First off, the magic question.
We received an updated draft development code on Friday. It has been sent out to some of the committee members and planning commission, and internally the department heads. So we're going to review it internally, and then we will distribute out to everyone else that would like to review it with us. But it's promising.
Thank you. And second, we're coming up on CDBG time, aren't we?
So this year, you may remember that we amended our fiscal year. So it used to be January to December. We had some issues with timeliness and spending the money. A lot of it had to do with focusing on spending COVID money. And then we received our 24 allocation in November, and that was, you know, hard to spend a lot of money in a little bit of time. So we did an amendment where we changed our fiscal year from January to December until now it goes from August, or September to October. So we have until September 30th of this year to spend $24. And then our fiscal year '25 starts in October.
And where are we with that? What are we, do we have a breakdown of how that money's been spent?
So we're in the process of spending it. We break it down for infrastructure, which is like sidewalks. We did some Tideflex stuff with Mr. Tiedeki last year. We have to spend a certain amount on public service. We have to cap it, I think 20% for admin. Public service are things like victims assistance, mobile meals has to be spent within the community. We partner with HWA, which is a heating, or heating through Summit County, some lead abatement. We do acquisition and demolition. So all of those houses that are condemned or tearing down, CDBG money is being spent on that through Slum and Blight. So we have to meet our national objectives in order to spend the money on specific projects.
And does that include redoing this parking lot?
It could.
Striping it, taking that grass area with the trees and actually making it pretty? A destination type thing?
Money could be spent on that, yes. It's an LMI area.
I heard it could be.
We would have to make sure we have enough money allocated for infrastructure in order to make those improvements.
How much, do you know off the top of your head how much we're spending on infrastructure?
Um, I think between our allocation last year and this year, the new allocation may be like $250,000. But we do have some funds that are being spent on it this year. There's an ODOT project that is on South Van Buren. We're using that money up to $100,000 to pay for part of that project. We have some infrastructure, I think that might be the infrastructure with College Park as well, so the pavilion, new bathrooms.
Sidewalk on South Van Buren?
North Van Buren.
North Van Buren, sorry.
Say, wait, we have sidewalks, right? Even still, sidewalks on North Van Buren, we're using CDBG money for that?
There is a small portion on North Van Buren.
North Van Buren, I said south.
That is being done by ODOT. We are going to use some of the funds to pay for a portion of that.
Why?
Well, because it fits a national, it fits a national objective for CDBG. Sidewalks are able to be built with CDBG dollars.
And how much is, do we have a CDBG budget for that?
Uh, I believe it's $100,000.
And how much do we get roughly from that? Is it like just shy of $700,000?
Yeah, I think this year we had like $689,000.
And we're going to use $100,000 of that for sidewalks on North Van Buren? Is this already been committed?
So not, it has not technically been committed. It's been earmarked, so we have to work with ODOT to make sure that they do the reporting correctly. So once we, once the project is complete, ODOT will submit all of the required documents to the city of Barberton, and then the city of Barberton will actually be reimbursed for the project, because I believe that we had to pay that upfront, and then CDBG will be a reimbursable grant to the city.
And this is a part of North Van Buren, just past Park Avenue, where there are no sidewalks. We get a lot of pedestrian traffic down North Van Buren from that section all the way down to Fairview. We had fatalities a little closer to Fairview, but this is kind of that start, it's a very small section of low or moderate income area in that section that she spoke about. So we're matching some funds with CDBG funds.
Don't we have any other infrastructure money we can use instead of that CDBG money?
No. Not for this program, no.
Did we go into the whole project with ODOT with the intention of rating, $100,000 out of less than $700,000 budget seems pretty excessive for just sidewalks. I mean, I'm not disputing that sidewalks are needed, but that's a giant chunk, especially when you take 20% of the 680 towards administration off the top, and now you take $100,000 off of that for sidewalks. We can't assess that somewhere, we can't, I mean, we only get this once a year, this isn't, I just don't see, I don't see the logic behind that, because that's, I don't have a calculator in front of me, but again, 680, take 20% off that, take $100,000 away from that, that doesn't leave a whole lot. That's a huge chunk for.
Well, this is, you know, that section of Van Buren has been something that we've applied to safe routes for several times, to make it all the way down is very expensive. So this portion of it kind of feeds into, you know, East Park, East Castle, that area that kind of goes up. It's definitely needed.
I'm not disputing the need, but even safe routes to schools, what school is around North Van Buren?
Uh, it's a, kids are either going to the high school that way, either from side to the side streets, or they're going, if you come down one of the side streets, you're either going right to Fairview Avenue and down, or you're going left to Robinson, and towards the high school. They walk on the tracks over there, that runs parallel with Van Buren.
Right. That's all, that's all the questions I have for them, but that doesn't seem, that doesn't seem like a very good use for it, especially, like I said, that's raiding, raiding an already depleted area there, so. Are there any other questions? Counselor?
Well, part of, your first part of the question was whenever we started the project, were sidewalks being considered when ODOT took the project?
Well, we were doing the, the sidewalk, Director Shree, we planned on those sidewalks down there last year, didn't we? Earlier this year?
Yes, I believe so. This was, I mean, it's not, Mr. Tiedeki has more details.
But this isn't, my point is, this isn't something that just came up, we have been.
We've been planning on.
Were we always going to use those funds for it?
I'm not sure at what point in time that it was decided that we were going to use CDBG for management.
Did we start talking about this last late summer, early fall?
It recently came through Streets, February, if it came through there, I think about it. And our portion of the payment for that, I think, is that 107. I'd have to go look back at my things.
We just have some for 153, that was our match for sidewalks in Van Buren.
Can I get back with you on that?
No, I'm just, I remember that number.
I thought 107 is sticking in my head for what our match was on that. I have to go look back at everything.
Director?
So we did, so recently, Council, recently, there was legislation in front of council to approve, and what it is, is they hold that money in escrow. So it was, it was 153, 159, I don't remember the exact number, but that money is held in escrow for the project. And then as the project is being completed, they send payoffs to us to approve the work. So once, once the work's done, it's been approved, it's been accepted, we sign that, and then ODOT, or the contractor gets paid from ODOT. So once that happens, what Stacy was speaking of, is that we would take that, once they're paid, we would take that, and our portion would be up to a certain dollar amount, would be reimbursed from CDBG. So the money's already out of our account, so I believe we use infrastructure improvement for that, and then it would be reimbursed, so the money, I believe, I'm not going to try to speak out of turn for Jeremy, but when that money comes back, we go back into the infrastructure fund, I believe. Starting to learn, Jeremy and I have phone conversations all the time, so starting to figure out where the money goes when it comes back, but yeah, so that's how that would work.
Any other questions, comments? Is there anything else, anything else for miscellaneous? Counselor Harris, you got a concerned look on your face?
No, I was just listening to the old CDBG funds and how we're using them. Don't, don't agree with it. I mean, we could use that money for things that are much more. I don't know.
Director, does the planning commission have a say in, or recommendations for how this is spent?
So every year we have to get our annual action plan or our annual budget approved, and there are specific pots of money that we allocate towards specific projects. So infrastructure is always one of them. In the past, we've used it for residential sidewalk replacement, or where there are new, need to be like gas sidewalking or sidewalks. We've also done it as like a grant for a match, like city pays 60% out of CDBG, and then, you know, the property owner pays a certain portion, but it's always like income eligible in LMI areas. But yes, the budget is always approved beginning of the year, and how we use the dollars. And we obviously have to follow the HUD guidelines to make sure those projects fit.
The LMI areas, we have 15 precincts in the city, 14 of them are LMI areas, aren't we, am I correct?
So they just came back out with the new LMI map, and I can share that with you guys, but there are certain sections that are within the city that you would think would be maybe be LMI, but they're not. However, you can also do specific, so say you're not an LMI area, but you need sidewalks or whatever, we can use you specifically and not use the LMI area, but the person itself to justify spending the dollars.
So if your whole area is not LMI, but the people that would benefit from the sidewalks are.
Thank you. Well, with nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 6:18.
All right. Next up is Street Sidewalk and Lighting, Mrs. Spieck.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, it is Monday, May 5th, 2025, at 6:18 P.M. Everybody in the Streets and Sidewalk Lighting Committee is present, along with all members of council, and members noted on my sheet. Today we have one piece of requested legislation, a letter from Todd Shree, Service Director, requesting legislation to enter into contract with Barbicus Construction Company for the asphalt paving portion of the 2025 street resurfacing program. Emergency wording requested, please see request. Do I have any remarks about this piece of legislation? Questions from the committee?
When they start and after this is not?
So, I mean, as soon as we get approval, and it's through council, we'll set up a pre-con meeting ASAP, and then they will let us know their timeline. I do know that they've already been to Barberton, they already have game plan, they already know the direction they want to go. They were chomping at the bit to get started. As soon as we told them, they were thinking apparent load builder, and that's before we reconcile all of the pricing, because then our engineer, GPD, has got to go back and look at all their big costs. And I mean, they're ready to come as soon as we're like, okay, you guys are going to get the contract, they're like, okay, when can we start? So I know that they're wanting me to get here, get going.
So the streets have been finalized?
So we give them a tentative list, along with all, they get all of the awful rules.
All right. Just wondering what the big secret about all that is, that's all.
I mean, it's the same secret every year, Monty. And the list isn't finalized until the contract is approved through council.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Chair. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Thank you. So if this is voted on next week and passes, can we see the list?
We will, we will press release as soon as everything's passed.
Press release.
A press release, okay.
And I will share it with you when I share it with the press, so you guys will have it at the same time with it.
Appreciate it.
That's the way it's always been done.
Yeah, I know that, I thought it happened last year. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Quite frankly, every council member is entitled to that list as of now. That's just my perspective on that matter. So if council wants it, I'll talk with the mayor and Mr. Shree. We are privy to that information as council members. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. May I have a motion to call for this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. And a second?
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
We are one step closer to getting the list, everyone. We have no pending legislation. I wanted to bring up a few things for miscellaneous, excuse me, miscellaneous discussion, really kind of like a few heads up kind of things. Last week, last Wednesday, we met at Wesleyan Cavalry Church for the residents of Stratford to talk about that big project that's going on there. The turnout was really great, I was pretty impressed with that. I'd like to thank the mayor, Mr. Shree, Vanessa and Ashley for putting that on. Like I said, a lot of residents showed up, they had great questions, so I'm excited to see that happen. So that was a success, so thanks for getting all of that out there for those people, that was great. I don't know if you guys noticed, but there were 10 trees planted on Norton Avenue last year. Those were donated by Habitat for Humanity, so I wanted to give them a big thank you for that. They offered that to us, I took advantage of that, and I'm so excited. So this June, there's going to be beautiful blossoms on that street, and I just can't wait. So I wanted to talk about that a little bit. You also may have noticed that there are two more parklets downtown on Second Street, one in front of Owl's Meat Market, and the other in front of the Dungeons and Dragons, the old Hisssis Bakery. I noticed those today, I don't know if those were in over the weekend, but I noticed them this morning driving down to the office. So I'm very excited about those. Please make a Facebook post and enjoy them this summer. And then also, lastly, I don't know if you guys all saw, the city put out the fact that they will begin street sweeping next week, May 12th. So take a look at that, the schedule is on there, but the biggest change will be that the sweeping will be done during the daytime on a trial basis. So they won't be enforcing a parking ban during this time, but, you know, please be aware that if you live on a curbed street, it will be swept during the daytime. I think that was basic, oh, oh my God, almost got one more thing. Guess what? The paver was delivered this morning that we voted on last week. So I wanted to thank everybody for voting on that last week, it was much needed, it's ours, and I can't wait to see what we do with it. So anything else from anybody in the committee? Go ahead.
So with that, that we have the paver, let's talk about street cutouts there, Mr. Shree. Lots of them have put in work tickets for some that haven't been touched in weeks, in weeks, and I'm talking about making it drivable. You can't even drive over it without losing your front end, rear end, sides of your car.
Okay. I have, this is the first that I've heard of it, Monty. So I mean, they haven't been submitted to me.
Because I put a work ticket in.
I follow up with the water garage, I'm assuming that that's where the work tickets are going.
Yeah. The, the work ticket.
They've been busy chasing leaks. I mean, there's three holes dug down here on, I think it was Lake, that was almost 16 inch remaining.
Right.
There's a valve, old valve that was bad, they had to do line stops. So a line stop is they basically cut a hole in the top of the line, both sides, put a balloon in it, blow the balloon up, balloon stops the water, so they can make it repaired, and then you put a clamp on, the hole that the balloon goes in. I mean, that was a three or four day project. The guys are busy. Again, they want to catch up, they don't want to leave them like that, but I'll follow up with Matt and make sure that we're on top of it.
Please do, and if you can let me know. Because I, I know for a fact I put a ticket in, it was probably two weeks ago at least.
Which road?
Reese. Because I put a ticket in for the potholes, and then the intersection of 35th and Reese.
I'll make sure.
It's a very large cutout that was filled, and then it's got potholes in it. So if that tells you anything, thank you.
Mr. Shree, on our cutout report, could we have the date, and I might, I just don't have it in front of me, can we have the date that the cutout was created?
That's what, when you get the report, it was created that week.
That's the week, okay.
So it's either, it was either created or it was repaired. So there's only two options on the report.
Okay.
So it should be location, repair, or dug or repaired, date, and then comments, I believe.
So if I'm trying, I had a few in my ward, I want to see how long they've been there, I'd have to go back through the reports and find the streets?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I mean, and moving forward, if there's something that needs change on the report, we could.
I was just thinking if it's still open and it could just stay on the list, so even if it's been open two weeks and it's still settling, it would just be easier to find, because now I have to go back through all your reports and try to find my ward streets, so.
Do you save them, like consecutively, like as a, like on pages?
Yeah.
Forget how to do it, but you can do a V lookup.
Okay.
And just type it in.
I don't have them combined, so I'll have to just go back through.
Can we just do a continual running of, in that Excel sheet that you send us? Just add to it and?
Yeah, because then you could just make a column with that week's date and whatever came in that week.
Because I think it would be easier to actually see, you know, instead of looking at each sheet that you send us, if you just did one sheet and just a continual thing, even if they were closed out.
So I think the reason why we couldn't do that was because sometimes there are, it's not, I don't remember, I think there was other reasons that holes get opened in the road, so that's why I did it by week, but we could do it running. So like, it might not always be a water main break.
That's okay.
But, okay.
But it would still be a cut into the road, so it would still make the list?
Yeah, but this only comes from the water department. So like, if the gas company or the street garage or somebody else cuts a hole in the road, you're not getting, because this, so the report that I sent you comes straight from distribution and collection.
Gotcha.
From the water main breaks. So I guess I didn't really.
So if streets opens it up, you're not seeing it.
It's not going to be on that report either.
And is it getting, is it falling under the same request that we made for the timely cover-up? Or was that only if it's a water main?
I think, I believe it was any street cutout was the initial call.
And that includes storm sewers?
I mean.
Or sanitary sewers for that?
We're talking about this, it should, right?
I would hope.
Yeah.
So you almost need all of them that can make a cut in the road to report to you to make the one list? Okay.
I don't know how often streets would cut into the, you know, like, I mean, I know the, the storm sewer guys fix the storm sewer inlets. I mean, but that's on the side of the, side of the road.
It'd be cutting in a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I've seen them do a couple of them, and it's not, you know, like out in the middle of the street, or middle of the lane, or what have you, like, like water lines or anything like that. Thank you.
Did you have something?
Yeah, I just, I agree, I think it would be easier to just keep it all on one sheet. I think it would be better for you two to be able to keep track of everything, because you can see, you know, the whole list, rather than this is what happened last week, and we're still waiting on it to be repaired, but if you go back three weeks, oh, look, they're making progress, you know? So.
I agree.
So I don't, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna be honest, I don't keep track of a whole lot of that, that's what my manager does, and my manager's spreadsheet though is a whole lot more in detail than just when the hole is open, when the hole is repaired. It was when the hole was open, what size was the main, was it a water service, was it a water main, was it a fire hydrant, was it a sewer, so I mean, those aren't, they're not all on one list, so they're taking those off of their several different lists, whether it's service, water main, and putting it on one. So I guess we could, they could start one that's just a running cutout list, I don't think that that would add that much extra, it's just pulling it when they're entering it on the one, copy and paste it on the other, or vice versa, so I think we could probably accommodate it pretty easily.
Thank you.
Kidoki, go right ahead.
Thank you. South Van, Darian Snyder.
Yes.
I think it's still blinking, it's still blinking.
Still blinking.
I don't have an update on that, I can, I can try to get one for you, Mr. Tiedeki's on vacation, his son is getting married, I believe, they're doing a destination wedding, so I do know that he, he'll be back, but I can, I can try to reach out and get some information.
Thank you.
Okay, last one.
Last one, I forgot.
Maybe.
Mr. Shree.
Yes.
I very much appreciate the guys being out fixing the potholes, but when they're out fixing the smaller potholes, can we please, please make sure that they're using the tamper on these potholes? Because they were fixing ones, I'm on the corner, well, on State Street, and they're fixing ones there, and they just are using the truck that, you know, like the safety truck behind them to run over it, and then as soon as they move on, then as soon as traffic starts going over it, I can literally hear the tires picking up the asphalt. And so it's like, it's just, it's like, I'm, in my mind, I'm thinking there's taxpayers money coming rolling down the street, and it's like, I mean, I, you know, and they're not even like even taking their shells and hitting it with it, they're just putting it in there, and then the truck rolls over it, and then they move on to the next one. And it's like, I mean, like I said, I appreciate them doing it, but it's kind of the old adage, if you're gonna do it, do it right, and I know that usually nine times out of ten, there is a tamper on the truck, so.
I mean, I'll follow up with them, so I do know, I mean, they're, they're doing it because it's going, it's going to improve their, the speed of getting it done. Now, I understand what you're, anything that's loose, you're gonna hear that picked up on the tamper, what's in the hole should stay in the hole, but I mean, you're talking pothole, unload the tamper, tamp it, load it back on the truck, drive up to the next one, so I mean, it is gonna slow things down.
Yeah, I understand.
But I also understand, you know, do it right, you might only do it once.
Yeah.
So, again, so it's, you want to do it hastily, or do you want to, you know, get it done right and have it stay, so I will, I will discuss that with them and see if there's a reason why they don't want to unload that tamper every time, but I can definitely put.
Cause I mean, even they got, you know, there were like two guys today, so if one fills it in, the next one tamps, and then, you know, then they're gonna get it done in the same amount of time as it takes two of them to fill the holes and then move on. So, I mean, if it's just one guy.
So I mean, a rubber tire roller too is typically used in, you know, asphalt application, so I mean, it's not much different than a truck tire, other than it's a heavier piece of equipment, and they typically have seven or eight tires, and there are rubber tires that roll the asphalt in just the same, but, but I, like I said, I will, I'll have a discussion with them and make sure that they're doing the best for, like you said, our taxpayer funds, that they want a pothole package that's going to stay.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Shree, any more thoughts of using the Durapatch, Durapatcher? I know they used it up Thirty-third, that area, I think it did a great job, it looks like it's gonna hold in the concrete.
Recently?
Yeah, yeah, last three weeks they've been, they were doing some work up there.
But I, I approved the PO for the emulsion that goes in the, the Durapatcher, but I didn't know if they'd actually got the equipment out yet.
Yeah.
So, okay.
And I was wondering.
So personally, I'm a fan, I used one, I ran one over in Wandsworth, I, I think that under the right conditions, it is a lasting repair. If it's damp out, if humidity's too high, there's a lot of variables that, that make it fall apart, but, under the right conditions, I, I agree with you, it's, it's a really good package, and it's lasting compared to cold.
I believe there are going to be other sections of the city.
Yeah, I mean, I have to commend them, cause they did a heck of a job with the amount of mess they had, and yeah, it's a little bit messy right now, but I think once everything's worked in, and then, you know, they talked about maybe bringing a street sweeper back up there and getting all the loose gravel up, but yeah, it's a hundred percent better than what it was. So, the Durapatcher I think was, was great, it was gas and too, cause it didn't take as long, so.
Like you said, I'm, I'm a fan, so.
Yeah, I, I am too now, for sure.
I'll discuss it with Mark, and I think we'll see a little bit more.
Alright, thank you, I'm done.
Something nice of Mark this day to call.
I can be nice.
With nothing else, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, in a second?
One second.
We are adjourned at six thirty-six.
Thank you, Miss Speck, next up is Environmental Health and Social Services, Mrs. Hager.
Thank you, President, Chair, Environmental Health and Social Services, if any council members tonight on the fifth at six thirty-six PM, all members of my committee, including myself as chair, Phil the Restless Co-Chair, Taylor Thompson, Justin Greer, along with other council members present and just as noted on my list. We have no requests for legislation, no pending legislation, is there any miscellaneous discussion from my committee or the body? Any, this?
I received my first mosquito bite this weekend, which made me think to ask you, when will they start spraying?
I'm not sure, I will definitely speak with, I'm planning on, I'm planning on giving eighty dollars, calling, calling down to mosquito a basement and see, and I was actually gonna say that it's, you know, getting warmer, so just, you know, make sure you're not leaving a lot of water residue, you know, laying around and stuff, cause it's the hot weather. Weather gets warmer, the mosquitoes are gonna start breeding, and I haven't gotten any, you know, anything on, I could look and see what the numbers were for like Niles virus and stuff last year, but I don't have any numbers yet for anything for this year.
Yeah.
Any word on how the tire pickup went?
No, I haven't heard anything about that yet.
Okay, I know they, they got a semi, semi full, from what I've heard.
Yeah, that's a big thing, so.
I don't know how many tires that was, but.
Yeah, tires are a big thing, anything that can hold water, that gets stagnant, is a breeding ground for the mosquitoes, we don't want any Niles virus in the area.
I know where there's a tire, on Worcester Road, alongs on the big front end loader, thing's been here for three years.
For a long time.
Block in the driveway across from Rager Dairy.
It used to be down by the old grocery place, I don't know if you've been there. I feel like a CrossFit company should pick it up and go use it.
Somebody should pick it up.
No, we don't do that anymore.
Anything from the gallery?
Yes, according to the Man Mosquito Agency's Facebook page, they collected over six hundred tires out of the event.
Thank you. There is nothing else, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In a second?
One second.
We are adjourned at six thirty-nine.
Thank you, Mrs. Hager, last but not least, Finance and Personnel, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to bring the Finance and Personnel Committee to order, it is Monday, May fifth, twenty twenty-five, six thirty-nine PM here in council chambers. All of the committee members are present, which includes myself as chair, Mr. Heidick, Mr. Griffin, and Mr. Greer, all of their council members are also present, as well as guests as noted on my sheet. We have a few requests for legislation, the first being a letter from Don Patterson, the Parks Director, requesting legislation to appropriate three thousand dollars from the Senior Center Trust Fund to the Parks Operating Budget, emergency wording and one reading requested, this is for yearly activities and events at the Active Adults Center. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, do I have a motion to call for this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, in a second?
One second.
Alright, those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a letter from Jamie Iceman, the Director of Public Safety and Human Resources, requesting legislation to allow the mayor to enter into contract with NFP Corporation Services, Inc., for purposes of consulting and brokerage services for the city, emergency wording is requested, are there any remarks? Mr. Heidick.
Thank you, Chair, what is, what is NFP Corporation doing for us?
Sorry, Health and Church Broker, been with them a number of years.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to call for this?
So moved.
Thank you, in a second?
I'll second.
Alright, those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a letter from Jeremy Flaker, our Finance Director, requesting an appropriation of five hundred thousand dollars from the unappropriated item of the city grant fund to the Planning Department's Operation and Maintenance Budget, emergency wording and one reading is requested, this is for the, the Planning Department had received an EPA grant for brownfield remediation, will be reimbursed as we expense the money. Are there any questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to call for this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, in a second?
I'll second.
Alright, those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and lastly, we have another request from Jeremy Flaker, Finance Director, requesting legislation to create a new capital improvement fund called the City Hall slash Justice Center Project Fund, emergency wording and one reading requested, are there any remarks? Hearing none, do I have a motion to call, please?
So moved.
Thank you, in a second?
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Is there any miscellaneous for Finance and Personnel this evening? Yes.
Thank you, Chair, I know it goes back to an earlier conversation, but since we're in finance and I prefer to come out of that, I really wish we could find a hundred thousand for sidewalks elsewhere, instead of this budget, that's between that and the twenty percent for administration, that takes thirty-five percent, just between administrative costs and that project, thirty-five percent of our CEB money is gonna be gone, just because of that. I really would prefer if we could find a different fund, or cobble it together like we do some other things, and not grade that, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hager.
I just think this fits for miscellaneous conversation, but I was thinking about Mr. Easterling's email, Mayor, I know he was kind of questioning, I guess maybe if you could explain, we need an engineer study of the elevator, that is what makes the bid go out?
Yeah, so, I don't have all the specifics with me, and Mr. Tiedeki was dealing with that.
I know.
So it's my understanding, you know, we, that's not every elevator company, and I'm not sure about those, but it sounds like they do, a lot of, every elevator repair company is certified by the state for redoing an older elevator, based on your email, it sounds like they are, cause they have their own.
They're worldwide, they don't get no bigger.
So, but we have to go through a legal process, so I'm not sure, I can't recall the name of the company that we are working with, so that's all I know.
That had the parts, I was just wondering, we can't, you can't put out for bid, this is the elevator, this is what we want to do, bid on it, we have to do an engineering study, does that give us plans or anything, or?
Yeah, it provides us plans for that, I'm not sure about your first question, I'd have to do some research on that.
And I know it was already approved, we don't have a say in it or anything, it just seemed like if everything is gonna require GPT to do a study first, it's gonna cost a, and I'm sure you have the money budgeted, but it just seemed crazy to think we'd have to spend that type of money when an elevator company would probably develop plans for it.
And I think it's because of the age of the elevator, you know, it's a more standard, up-to-date elevator, maybe different, but unfortunately, a lot of things take studies to, to be worked before the actual construction work.
Okay, Mr. Shree.
So, so, what it is, is so in order to have an elevator company bid on the elevator, you have to be able to bid apples to apples, so we, we can't just say, here's our elevator, come, come look at it if you want to, we have to have a plan, so we have to have somebody come in, a professional, like Mayor was saying, that's certified, to develop these plans, to then put together a bid book, so that Otis and Schindler and Gable and all these other companies can then bid on the package that's in front of them. I understand what you're saying, Chuck, that we, we could have probably hired an elevator company to put together that plan, but is that, at that point, and I don't know, this would maybe be a question for our law director, is that allowing them to put proprietary stuff in the plan, so that they are the only ones that are able to fit on? Do we have to have a fair bidding process, we can't just hire one company that, say, an Otis might have an Otis car, they build a plan that's an Otis plan, and Schindler can't build that plan.
We should hire someone other GDP than to do the other fifty percent of our studies, we have a hundred percent GDP on over study CP.
So we, we don't, we, we use CT, which is now Verandis, to do almost all of our wastewater, we use BNN versus NICE to do almost all of our water, we do.
Well, water building is different, that's not apples for apples.
What's that?
That's not apples for apples, I mean, you got water sewer, which is not the same as building, but I'm saying, our building studies are only GDP.
GPD.
Right?
I mean, we do.
We're hiring a general contractor with engineers to design a specific, they're gonna hire Otis, or they're gonna hire Schindler, so we're gonna pay them to pay them to get what we could have got, because of some legal, I'm guessing, sorry. But you know what I mean, it just, to me, it really seems like, and we're still, we still got a thirty thousand dollar motor sitting somewhere that we ain't gonna be able to use, what's the, you know, what's the deal with that thing?
Well, I cannot speak to the elevator specifically, but what I can say is Ohio law requires us to put forth a bid that allows every person that bids on the job to have an equal ability to bid on that project, so that it's on a level playing field, so, I, well, I do not know anything about the elevator, here's my thoughts, in order to do that, let's say for a doorway, we could tell you what kind of door we need, we could do that, but there's no one in the city who has expertise in elevators, so we can't develop the specs for the bid, because we can't, we can't do that, and we have to have those specs, because the law requires us to have the same information to all potential bidders. Now, elevator-specific technology, I don't know anything about, but I can tell you just for the bidding procedures, that's how it has to be done, so when you do a street, let's say, like Worcester Road, that had to have an engineered study, so that all of the construction companies could, had the same information to bid on that project. If we called Otis and said, tell us what we need, and it was over the bid amount, we wouldn't be able to do that, cause the law requires us to bid that, but I understand your frustration, I don't disagree with you, but we have to have those plans out to the people to bid, have an equal access to the information.
So what makes it more, what makes putting a door in any different than fixing the elevator?
Because I assume that, you know, any guy who's a laborer in our street department could do the specs for a door, but not, but he couldn't do the one for the elevator, and I mean, like Tiedeki's an engineer, and I bet you he couldn't write the specs for an elevator, and I bet you you could find a lot of engineers who couldn't do that, it's just a different animal, but that applies to anything, like the screens at the, press screens at the wastewater plant, we don't have the capability to develop the specs for that, we hire someone to do that, if we're talking about the filters at the water plant, we don't have expertise to write specs for that, and those things have to go out to bid, cause they're a lot of money. So, I, like I said, in the elevator, I can't answer why, what that looks like, I don't know anything about elevators, but we're trying, the law requires us to present a level playing field to all. But we're trying, the law requires us to present a level playing field to all the bidders. So if Otis, if we hired Otis to come in, they couldn't be a bidder because they would have access to more information than the next person. We, we didn't have, we wouldn't have Kenmore come and write the specs for the road that they're going to put out to bid.
I get that.
Yeah.
But what I don't get is you can't call anyone to come repair the elevator without sending it out.
Now I can't speak to anything after that.
Right, you know what I mean? Because that's, that's what, we're trying to get the thing repaired.
This is where government sucks.
Well, that's horrible.
Yes.
I mean, that's $45,000 for someone to come talk to, to tell you how they should do it, and they've got friends in the industry. So they're going to feed, hopefully not some knucklehead that can't fix it.
And we have no friends in Columbus writing the ORC code that screws us into these situations.
That's bad money.
It's unfortunate that there's some laws like that, that you have to abide by.
Mr. Harris.
I want to bring something up. I know last week we talked about property maintenance and trash cans, and I'm not going to get on that subject again because we could be here all day. I want to talk about, and I'm not picking on the mayor, I'm not picking on Mr. Shreve, the person I'd love to pick on is not here, but our Building Department has, has a huge turnover. And they're either transferring out or they're leaving. And I'm tired of hearing this, oh, well, they're getting paid better money to go somewhere else. That's BS because I've talked to some of these people that have left. And I'd like to know why, why we have such a big turnover in our Building Department. We've had an employee that was here 24 years, spent 17 years in the Building Department. 24-year mark, they leave, okay? Lack of leadership, lack of management from our Building Department. That needs to change. Property maintenance is something very, on everybody's mind, trash cans, grass, especially grass now, falling down houses. I mean, we're, how many houses do we have condemned? A long list. And I think if we enforce things more, we wouldn't have that, that problem. You know, I have, what, one, two, like four or five houses in just my ward that are condemned that should be getting tore down real soon.
They will be.
But we need to step our enforcement up of a lot of things, property maintenance-wise. You know, I had somebody contact me about, oh, well, you're going to increase fines on people, what about the elderly and stuff? It's not about that. The fines were there, it's about enforcement. If we can't have enforcement, then we have nothing. And, you know, based on what I've heard from prior employer, employees that are no longer with the city, had nothing to do with money. It was a lack of leadership, a lack of management coming out of the Building Department. And that's, that needs to change. If we're going to change things in the city, we need to start there. All right? So I have to say, thank you, Chair. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or remarks? Anything from the gallery? Mr. Shreve.
So I got a text message back from DPD to talk about, I know this isn't exactly finance-related, but we spent money on it one time. South Ambrose Snyder, he says, so what he just told me is they have to complete the ADA ramps, which I, I know that they were supposed to be poured concrete, I don't know if the weather permitted it.
They did pour it.
So once those are poured, they have to do all the striping. Once the striping is done, and then, then the intersection will go in, into its normal operation mode. So as soon as they get the striping done, which again, we have to, the weather has to cooperate, so hopefully that will be soon.
I think it poured the ramps last week.
It's getting ready to rain right now.
Yeah, they did. They got, I saw Mac down. They got to the.
We're under a schedule to do it tomorrow. Yeah.
That's it, thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
We are adjourned at 6:54.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. That concludes our individual committee meetings. I need five minutes, and then we'll come back and view the committee of the whole.
I thought that was true.